Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from consent and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 18, 2022 meeting? Thank you, Abby. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Any noes or abstentions? And I believe Todd is joining us virtually. Todd, are you there? Okay, we'll keep asking. Oh, did I hear him? Did we hear you?
Yeah, can you hear me?
A little bit, just a second. Can you try again? All right, we're having trouble hearing you, Todd, but we'll keep moving on for now. I'll first read the consent agenda items. Number one, a request from the city of Des Moines for vacation of an alley right-of-way located west and adjoining 1830 Lincoln Ave. to allow the owner to assemble property for additional side yard. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number one will remain on consent. Item number two, a request from HRC NFS 1 LLC represented by Casey Port for review and approval of a PUD Final Development Plan Gray Station Link Parking Lot Reconfiguration for property located at 210 Southwest 11th and 310 Southwest 11th to allow additions to and reconfigurations of the site's bicycle and motor vehicle parking areas. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number two will remain on consent. Number three, a request from Geneva Sioux Shoemaker for the following property at 4970 Southeast 24th, A through C. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Item number three will remain on consent. Item number four, a request from Cole Lopez and Leah Guerra for the following regarding property at 2800 Brattleboro Avenue, A and B. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Item number four will remain on consent. Item five, a request from Stagecoach 2500 Southeast 43rd Street LLC represented by Jeff Paloscheck for review and approval of public hearing site plan Des Moines Outdoor Truck Storage for Type 2 Design Alternatives, A, B, A and B. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item? Anyone in the public? Number five will remain on consent. There is one more item that could possibly get moved to consent. Item number seven is a request from 1348 East Euclid Ave. LLC represented by Brad Lowe for the following regarding parcels located at 13131 East Douglas Ave., A through C. Is there anyone on the commission who wishes to hear this item tonight? Is there anyone in the public? Okay, so that will remain on the public hearing. So the items for consent are 1 through 5. Do I have a motion to move consent agenda? Thank you, Francis. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And Todd, you can try to vote. How do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you. We can hear you now.
Motion carries 13-0.
Thank you. Item number six is a request from Zachary Finch and Cheryl Finch for the following property at 3125 Kingman Boulevard, A through C. C and Bert will present this item.
All right. Madam Chair member of the commission, Bert Drost, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Item number six is a request to rezone the property at 3125 Kingman Boulevard from the N5-4 district to the NX2 district. And the rezoning would allow use of the property to change from a residential use with up to four dwelling units to a residential use with up to eight dwelling units. The subject property is located on the north side of Kingman Boulevard, just to the west of the intersection with 31st Street. It's a, when you see the photos, you might recognize this property. It's a large, single-family house that's been converted in the past to up to eight dwelling units. Back in May of 2011, it had a fire, so it's been vacant since May of 2011, so it has lost all of its legal non-conforming rights. As I mentioned, the property is currently zoned N5-4, which that dash four means it can have up to four dwelling units by right. So they're wanting to reestablish the eight dwelling units within the property. And I would point out that the eight dwelling units on the half-acre lot would require the land use plan amendment to be amended from low-density residential to medium-density residential, which the medium-density residential classification allows for up to 12 dwelling units per acre. So I'll show you some photos of the property. This is what it did look like before the fire, and then here are some photos more recently that show how it's been since May of 2021. And then this is the comprehensive land use plan. Like I mentioned, the proposed eight units would require the land use plan to be amended to medium-density residential. The slight yellow on the map is low-density residential, which is what the property is currently designated. And then this orange and yellow crosshatching is actually the low-medium-density residential, which allows for up to 12 dwelling units per acre. So again, they're wanting a medium, which is to have more than 12 units per acre, but I'm just pointing out that all of the property to the east of the subject property is low-medium, which allows up to 12 dwelling units per acre. Staff does understand the plight of the applicant. This is a pretty big structure, has about 6,000 square feet of area, so it's probably unrealistic to think it will ever be converted back to a single-family dwelling. I know that's been a goal of the neighborhood, to get a lot of these properties that have been cut up into multi-units, they'd like to get them all converted back to single-family over time, but given the 6,000-square-foot size of this, I don't believe that's realistic. And as I mentioned earlier, the current zoning, which is N5-4, would allow for up to four dwelling units. Staff looked at this, and we've, like I said, understand the applicant's plight, but we don't feel that the medium-density designation is appropriate. The medium-density would allow the property to have eight dwelling units. We feel that the low-medium, or the low-dash-medium-density residential is more appropriate, which again is the 12 units per acre. It's a half-acre lot, so at that density, they would be able to have up to six dwelling units. So our staff recommendation would be that the land use plan be amended from low-density to low-medium-density. And then we've recommended some zoning conditions to go along with that. The first being, whoops, sorry. The first being that the use of the property for multi-household shall not exceed, or shall be limited to six or fewer dwelling units. And then two, any use of the property for multi-household use shall be in conformance with the site plan pursuant to all requirements of Chapter 135 of the code. And I'll go through some of the documentation we've received. This was the summary provided by the applicant for their neighborhood meeting. You can see they held it on a Friday at noon, so they didn't have real good attendance, but I do believe they have spoken with some of the other neighbors outside of their neighborhood The next email is from Lori Calhoun with the Drake Neighborhood Association. She provided a little bit more of a summary of that discussion. And I won't dwell on these too long, I can come back to them later if anybody needs me Then the next email is another email from the Neighborhood Association, just stating that they're not in support of the request to have eight dwelling units, but they would be in agreement with the city's recommendation to allow up to six dwelling units on the property. Then they also stress the need to have quality property management. Then the next emails are from some of the neighbors, and they might be here tonight, but I'll just scroll through these fairly quickly. This one is from a neighbor with quite a few concerns. I believe the next, yeah, this is another email from the same person with more concerns. We have a series of emails from Dell Brink in opposition. He talks about past experiences he's had with this property. And I should mention that the fire was in May of 2021, and then the applicant tonight actually just purchased the property this past July, so we can't, they're not responsible I'll go through the comment cards. We did get eight comment cards in opposition, and I'll point out that the opposition is over 20% of the land area within 200 feet. So in order for the rezoning to be approved, it will take a supermajority vote by city council, meaning six of the seven council members will have to vote in support of the rezoning in order for it to pass.
I just want to clarify, the people commenting on the requested rezoning, and then, because the city staff has a different recommendation, so I guess I just want to distinguish what people are opposing.
Yeah, the notification that the neighbors all received only said the rezoning would allow up to eight dwelling units. The neighbors, I believe Surocha has talked to a few of the neighbors and let them know our position is to allow up to six, but by and large, most of these people still think the, I mean, the applicant's request still is for eight dwelling units, but they're not aware that staff's recommending six.
Bert, regardless of the zoning, for this building to be reoccupied, it'll have to have a site plan, correct?
Correct.
Unless it's converted to single-family. So four units, six units, eight units, there's going to be a site plan, the site has to be brought into conformance with current standards, paving, landscaping, all those things.
Trash enclosures, yeah.
Yeah, trash enclosure.
I'll show you the consent map. So here's the consent map. You can see the properties on both sides of it did not weigh in. Just point out that the one immediately to the east is an apartment building with 16 dwelling units, and the property immediately to the west is an apartment building with 15 dwelling units. That's a little bit more of the rationale why staff was inclined to support up to six dwelling units, just given that it is between two fairly large apartment buildings. I guess that concludes my presentation. Did you have any other questions for me? No, the, both of those properties are also zoned N5-4, meaning the current zoning would only allow them to have up to four dwelling units as well. So they're considered legal non-conforming until they either change use or sit vacant for six to 12 months. Just one parking space per dwelling unit. So if it, by right, or if they're allowed to have four units, they would need to provide four spaces. If you go with the staff recommendation for six, they would need six parking spaces. And I know this aerial is not very clear, but there is quite a large parking, I think it might be gravelled now, parking area to the rear of the building.
Is that parking area shared with any of the other buildings?
No, no, there is a large parking lot north of this parking lot that is used by the property to the east, but I don't believe there's any way to pass through.
Bert, can you repeat the number of units?
Sure.
And the adjacent?
Yeah, there's 16 immediately to the east and 15 immediately to the west.
How big are those buildings, the east and west? Like, what is the square footage of those? Because isn't the one in the east is a two-story or is that a three-story? And the one in the west is also a two?
I believe it's a two-story. I can go to the accessory record and see for sure.
I'll look it up, it's no problem, sorry.
All right, that's fine, I'm kind of curious.
It looks like it's actually three with like a basement, kind of a garden level. So like, two up and there's another garden level down below that probably has units there.
Now it's being painted, so.
Don't worry about it, Bert.
All right, any other questions? Thanks, Bert. Is the applicant present? Please come up. You have 10 minutes. State your name, address, and sign in when you're finished.
I'm here representing Zach and Cheryl. Trevor Rodasovich, what were you saying, sign in?
Your address.
Where?
What?
Where am I supposed to sign in?
At the end, you can sign in. I think maybe Tyler has it.
Okay.
We'll get you set up with that after that.
Okay, all right. No, I was just kind of thrown into this, the very end. I'm just here to represent him and go along with what they're saying.
Could you state your address, sorry?
303 North B Street, Indianola. Yeah, like you said, there was a fire in one unit that'll need completely remodeled, gutted, everything will be brought up to date, like, let's see, the site plan, all-new windows, doors, electrical will be brought up. To date, the site plan and the landscaping will all be, didn't you say that's all? Yeah, so that's all I was told to come in and we'll go along with whatever the city would like to allow.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
So are you saying that the applicant is in agreement with the city for six dwelling units?
Yes, whatever is.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I don't have a lot more information. I hadn't been to any of these other meetings. I was thrown in at the last minute, so I was.
Yeah, you're good. All right, well, thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak in favor of this item? Just a second. Carol, you can come up first. And you know the drill.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward 3, zip code 50312. And every time I ride my bike by this building, which you can't do currently because Kingman's all torn up, I'm picturing John Belushi sort of running out of there and saying something crazy, but it just looks like a place that should house a lot of college students. And I'm a little disappointed to hear from both the city and from the neighbors that we should be looking to have less density in our city because we do have such a housing crisis. I am, I would, it's not clear to me, is this going to be torn down or, no, it's not, okay. So I think it would be great if you could keep eight dwelling units in there. You've got Drake students, you've got other people that would love to have affordable housing in such a transit-rich area with lots of great amenities nearby. There's plenty of parking back there, the lot is a little iffy. I was up there today, but I, I think it would be fantastic to have eight affordable units in a neighborhood and a city that really needs them. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. And questions, just a second. Anyone else in favor that would like to speak? Anyone neutral, and that would be you, if you wanted to come up and ask a question, but you do have to come up and say your name and address.
I do have comments, so I'll just hold that.
Okay. Anyone neutral? Anyone in opposition? Please, yeah, okay. You can just form, you know, a line amongst yourselves and then state your name, address, and you have five minutes, sign in when you're done.
So I'll be brief. I live at 3219 Kingman. My name is Lyle Erickson. So I've lived next to this property as an eight-plex for a long time. I disagree that the density is appropriate. We have had problems with drugs, we've had problems with violent crime, guns, we've had problems with trash, parking. There's, I don't think there's enough parking on that lot for eight units, so the overfill of parking ends up, you know, in the neighborhood. So it's, you know, the neighbors who call in when there are drug issues, the neighbors who call in when there are, you know, cars left for weeks at a time on Kingman, I would like to see it go back to four. I think that, you know, four units is, I don't, my question was going to be the rationale for six versus four. So maybe, you know, I guess I kind of oppose the other way, but those are my thoughts. I'm with the Neighborhood Association in saying no.
Thank you. And whoever wanted to come up next? I'll remind you to state your name, address, and sign in when you're done.
Dell Brink. I am at the corner of 31st and Kingman, 3103 Kingman Boulevard. I have prepared remarks. And I did not know about the six-plex thing. Within the past three years, I have been the victim of arson, property damage, a home invasion, identity theft, and credit card fraud. Many of those crimes were directly connected to 3125 Kingman Boulevard. The others resulted from people who lived in similar rentals nearby. In addition, I, as a resident of the neighborhood of Drake, have dealt with random gunfire, again, two weeks ago. Unsupervised children from nearby multiplexes tossing footballs over cars as they travel on Kingman. Abandoned pets, don't ask how many I've adopted. Garbage, theft, and pet owners who actually open the gate on my fence to allow their dogs to relieve themselves there and then close the fence again. That was 3125 Kingman. I am tired of being a victim. I am tired of being in contact with the police and Polk County Victim Services. I vehemently oppose this request for rezoning. It will only exacerbate existing problems. I don't see the need. The neighborhood is already high-density. The apartment buildings on either side of that property are never at capacity. Signs advertising rentals are always posted. I already checked this week, they're still there. Walked down Kingman, Cottage Grove, Brattleboro, or Rutland. On numerous streets, the multiplex rentals heavily outnumber the single-family homes. The need does not exist. I hope someone from zoning has spoken within Best Des Moines. Does rezoning align with the plans of the city to survey and improve our neighborhoods? Does it align with the goals of Invest Des Moines? Rezoning seems contrary to what I know of the survey and the program. I want a safe neighborhood. My neighbors and I historically know where the drug houses are, where prostitution flourishes. Do your duty and maintain zoning. Those ordinances exist for a reason. If the city wants safe neighborhoods where families can thrive, do not allow special consideration to someone who lives out of town and will take his profits there. I have spoken with enough neighbors, I know residents have moved out of the neighborhood for safety and crime issues. I have witnessed from my kitchen window many times that the police visited 3125 Kingman Boulevard. The building has been vacant for over a year, the neighborhood has finally quieted down. Helping calm this is the addition of single-family homes on the corner of 31st and Cottage Grove. But if this special permission is granted, I guarantee crime will return. Think of the burden on the police, fire, and emergency services. Why should my tax dollars be drained by recurring problems at a single property? Where do we draw the line? Rezoning this property sets a precedent. Only one person benefits, the applicant. The rest of us will have to live with the aftermath of this decision and serve as the de facto managers, because I have learned from my neighbors that the applicant has been deliberately vague about hiring a management company. I oppose urban blight. I oppose the abandonment of families from the city to the suburbs. It happens because of safety. I oppose this rezoning.
Thank you. Your time is up. The next person? Same name, address, sign in when you're done, in five minutes.
My name is Ben Frombach, and I'm here with my lovely wife Dana tonight. I live at 1058 31st Street, which is directly east of the parking lot there. And we also oppose this rezoning. I'm not an expert on zoning laws, so I had to look up in Chapter 134 what the zoning code says. It says, starts out, "It is intended to preserve the scale and character of residential neighborhoods." The two key words there are preserve and scale. So what happens when scale isn't preserved? Well, you have a property like this, which Dell has so colorfully described. We moved in to the neighborhood in 2019, and within a month of being there, we were greeted to a person in the middle of winter, standing in nothing but shorts on the roof of this house, trying to set themselves on fire. This was the same person who had also lit several other fires around the neighborhood. This person was associated with this property. Throughout the rest of the summer, there were multiple calls for service, for police, fire, emergency, lots and lots of traffic. This is a problem house, because that's what happens when scale isn't preserved. Nothing good can come of it. On either side of it, there are multi-unit dwellings, as we can see that apparently are also not in compliance with the zoning, but these we can see that apparently are also not in compliance with zoning. But these were purpose-built to be apartments, and they don't seem to have the same problems that this house that's been converted into apartments have. They're just a lot quieter. So when you don't have the appropriate scale, you have problems. Now, I'm not against density. I think multi-unit housing is perfectly fine. It adds density and diversity to the neighborhood, which is crucial for a vital neighborhood. That's why this house could have four units comfortably instead of eight. When, I wasn't able to attend the meeting with the homeowner at noon because I obviously had to work. Luckily, my wife was able to take off some of her time from work and attend. The question of the homeowner was asked, "Why eight instead of four?" And the homeowner shrugged and said, "Look around," implying that he would be able to rent four units at a high enough price. Well, I would encourage him to look around. Look at Dell's house on the corner. It's beautiful. His garden is immaculate. He obviously takes a lot of pride in it. He cares about the neighborhood. Look directly across the street. There are two brand-new houses that have been built as rental units, but they've been appropriate in scale. In scale. And they've preserved the character of the neighborhood. Look at the corner of 31st and Cottage Grove. If there's houses that are being refurbished, they're going to be beautiful houses. And then walk around the neighborhood and look at all the yard signs that say Invest DSM. Those are property owners who have used their money and used some matching funds from the city to invest in their properties and make them nice. And we're included in that. We care about our neighborhood. So homeowner, please look around. And imagine a house that's four units, or perhaps six, that's worthy of getting the rent that you want. You know, make it nice if you're going to do it. It's not good for the tenants. It's not good for the neighborhood. And it's not good for the owner with eight units in there. Obviously, it was set on fire. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Are we able to ask a question, or no?
Sure.
The units across, you referenced 3120, I assume, which is across the street. How many units are in that? Because that's a converted house, right?
I, I believe, I mean, I'm not sure exactly. I honestly don't know.
Okay. And the purpose-built one, how many units are in the purpose-built one?
I believe it's rented as a house, but it's, it's like, it's, there's usually Drake students living there. So it's, there are, you know, four or five people living there. I'm not sure exactly.
Okay.
3120 appears to be five units, correct, Assessor? That doesn't always match our rental records, but just quick information.
That's what, it looks like five in a 1,500-square-foot house, right? So it's like basically 500 square foot per thing. Okay.
Was there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition? An applicant, you do have five minutes for rebuttal if you'd like to address any questions or concerns. All right, thank you. Is there any questions for staff? I do have a question for staff. What, so if we just don't, if we decide not to approve any of this, what happens?
Like I said, the property's already zoned N5-4, which means they're allowed to have four units by right. But if they have three or more, they will be required to do a site plan. So even if they did convert this to a four-plex, there would be some improvements. They would have to meet parking, the current parking standards, current dumpster enclosure standards, things like that, so.
And just to clarify for the audience, the Planning and Zoning Commission is going to formulate a recommendation that will be sent to the City Council. Ultimately, the decision will not be made tonight. It'll be made by the City Council.
Yeah. And due to the level of opposition, it will take six of the seven council members to be in support of, for it to pass.
Regardless of the number of units that we, that we allow, Bert, what kind of enforcement, inspection will the city undertake to ensure that that number of units is complied with?
Sure. If it's a rental property, which if there's more than one unit, they're typically, it typically is a rental situation. But any rental property is required to have a rental certificate. And with those rental certificates, there's inspections every two or three years to make sure that the units are up to code and whatnot. And like I said, the site plan's going to be required for three or more dwelling units, which will, they'll be required to bring it into confor, conformance with that site plan before they're issued a certificate of occupancy.
And the other thing is the renovations, particularly if they convert it to a different number of units. We're taking out walls. We're looking at, I'm sure they're changing, you know, electrical, HVAC, and all those things. We'll be, you know, building code-compliant, building, you know, permitting staff will inspect the property. So there, you know, and then, of course, just addressing a fire, that would in itself also trigger some upgrades and review, depending on the scope of the, of the fire.
Are there any other questions for Bert? All right, thanks, Bert. We're gonna close.
Quick question. Oh, yep. Um, sorry. Is it right that if the city staff's recommendation is, also is agreed on by this body, for six units, it still requires a supermajority of City Council?
It would. Yeah, correct.
Thanks.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for your thoughts.
I would be inclined to reject the rezoning request. I don't think that the applicant has made a case that is stronger than that made against that request.
I tend to agree with that. And I think the applicant's absence speaks kind of loudly as well, and would give concerns that the neighbors, the neighbors are presenting concerns that the applicant wouldn't address issues. And since he's not present, I think they're probably right.
I think also the applicant did state that they were going to get and renovate the entire building and could determine the number of units accordingly. So really, 6,000 square feet divided up into four units of 1,500 might actually give larger units, three better units. Might be better for families living in the neighborhood and driving that kind of, you know, activity in this, in this building anyway. So it seems like letting the zoning stand would actually probably more than likely give us the best result for this renovation.
As someone who's in Drake neighborhood and actually lives next to an absentee landlord where there's been a series of problems, I'm aggressively opposed to absentee landlords in these cases. However, I, and I do say that the fact they're not here for what is supposedly such a valuable investment that needs changes seems problematic. At the same time, though, I do think it's important that we do think through, you know, Carol's points, I think, are incredibly well-taken and very, very important. We do have an actual problem. If we do look at the average sizes of the actual apartments around the way, just the ones referenced by Drake neighborhood, we're seeing a max size of 875, a minimum of 452, putting us at about a, you know, 660, which I don't know if city staff did this calculation, but would actually come out to being exactly at eight would be possible with the average around here with a minimum of six and a maximum of 12, right? So I think we do want to be reasonable about like what size is needed, what size actually should be rented, especially for these types of neighborhood. Not everyone needs a 1,500-square-foot apartment. And to put on, on the market, things are not going to be able to be rented by the type of community that Drake is, seems like would be challenging. I'd also have a problem with that. But I'm obviously not opposed to the fact, if the feeling is that we're not going to want to approve this, works with me. I don't want to enable, I don't want to enable absentee landlord either, but I do want to make sure we're clear on the sizes that are actually reasonable, usable, and needed within our community.
Yeah, I think that, like, the neighborhood planning is kind of, I would suggest nuance to the Drake neighborhood, right? That you're kind of trying to create zones of different sizes of homes and things like that. So if, like Invest DSM is, is investing in and having success with a full-home rental across the street, I would wager that, you know, kind of the future of like this microcosm should, should kind of trend that way and have more bedrooms within a rental and rent it that way. And there's, you know, speaking firsthand, we're designing very small micro-units, you know, a couple blocks away. So the neighborhood's going to have a balance, for sure. But what's the right transition? I would say we stick with the zoning.
Is that, yeah?
I will, I will. I will move that we reject the request and stick with the current zoning, N54-4.
All right. There's a motion on the floor. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. And Todd, how do you vote?
I agree.
He said, "I, I agree."
You said approve the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Mr. or Madam Chair, does that mean that the council require a supermajority to overturn the commission's?
Yeah, they were already required based off of neighborhood opposition, but the, that, your recommendation, denial of the land use plan amendment also triggers the supermajority vote.
Like a double supermajority?
Right.
So, okay. All right. Well, that's probably pretty rare, so. Number seven, I already read, so I'm not going to reread it, but sure, she's going to present it for us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Surya Shichakar Borti, Planning Staff. The item before you is a rezoning request for a property in the vicinity of 1331 East Douglas Avenue. The applicant is looking, looking at redeveloping a property that is immediately south of the rezoning request under consideration here. This is a map showing the area that we are looking at rezoning. As you can see, this shaded area is currently zoned N3A. There's a parcel immediately south. It's zoned RX2 and is home to a former motel. The applicant is proposing to redevelop this entire area and so potentially expand on the, the development proposed here, down here for the property that's zoned RX2. And therefore, they want to rezone this area from RX, from N3A to RX2 so it can be redeveloped in, in coordination. This area is in the Highland Park neighborhood. And as you can see in the, in the map, it's, it's, it's in the vicinity of East 14th Street between East Douglas and East Euclid Avenue. This is a conceptual plan of the proposal and kind of what I was just explaining to you. The, the Phase 1, the building right here, there's an existing former motel. Potentially, there's a Phase 2. It's not really clear at the moment how the Phase 2 is going to work out, but potentially this could be expanded upon and the applicant might need the area that is being proposed to be rezoned. But the intention is to use the former motel as multiple household units in the, after the redevelopment. Here's some site photos. This area, if you look at the, this map here, you can see this really skinny sliver of land that extends all the way to East Douglas Avenue. So that's kind of the area here in the picture. This is looking at the former motel. And so this, this area is generally, it's along a busy transportation corridor, so there's a mix of uses. There's some residential to the north, but generally to the southeast and west, there's more mixed uses. So staff believes that the, the rezoning and the proposed RX2 zoning fits with the character of the area. It is also located within a community node, which means that a mix of densities of housing, medium and high-density housing, along with other mixed uses is appropriate along the transportation corridor. So, so with that in mind, staff believes that the rezoning to RX2 for this area is appropriate and would facilitate the redevelopment of the, the entire property, including the property to the south for apartment units. And therefore, staff is recommending the approval of the request to amend Plan DSM from low-density to community mixed use, land use, and also recommending approval of the rezoning from N3A to RX2 with the condition that no driveway access shall be allowed to the property from East Douglas Avenue. And again, that condition is primarily based on the fact that the, this sliver of land that you saw that was going up to East Douglas is too narrow for, for an appropriate access. So an access from East Douglas would not be appropriate. This is, the applicant held a neighborhood meeting. These are the, the details of their invitation. They provided a map. We did not receive any comment cards, either in support or in opposition to the proposed action. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
If they don't have a driveway to Douglas, where will they, how will they access the site?
So I'll just go back to the drawing here. So this area is going to be redeveloped in coordination to, with the area immediately to the south. So they would be able to access the site off of East Euclid. So this, this entire area will be developed in coordination. So they would be able to access off of East Euclid.
Are they intending to raise the whole thing and rebuild? And I guess is the villagin, so the villagin is not part of it. It's just the motel's there. Are they fixing the thing up as the plan, or is it all a new, complete campus?
I will defer that question to the applicant. I think the intention from what we understand is that they intend to use the existing building where you see the Phase 1, the existing motel building, the building that's further north in the Phase 2 area that could either be demolished or with the new building, or, or perhaps could be added on. But I will leave that, defer that to the applicant to clarify.
For the area that's getting rezoned, do you know if there's going to be, I assume there's going to be some sort of development on that, on those lots? What is the setback to the properties to the north? That they would have to abide by?
Nick is looking to buffer requirements. We'll provide that to you here shortly. But there are standards in Chapter 135 of how, you know, what, how far wide of a setback you have to have in residential property for commercial use. And then you have to have so many trees and fencing. But we can get, as soon as we have that, we'll provide that. But if there's other questions, we can go to those.
Is the applicant here tonight that can answer questions? Oh, then thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Typically, rezoning requests that come before us have some sort of potential development plan. What is the rationale behind bringing this specific request without a plan for that area?
I would, I would say yes and no. We encourage applicants to provide us at least a conceptual plan. I think what they, what they provided us is that this, the Phase 2, which would include the proposed rezoned area, that the, the precise rezoned area, that the precise concept for that is yet to be developed. So that was not submitted with the rezoning request. It is something that we encourage, but we do not always get that level of detail with the rezoning applications.
Sririshi, can that, the yellow area, the potentially rezoned area, is still going to be a separate property, right? That could be sold separately in the future?
I believe it could be, yes.
Okay. I was wondering that, because if you can't access it from the north, that property is kind of stuck.
Yes. I think if the applicant intends to redevelop this area separately, then they would have to acquire, they would have to purchase property from there.
Yeah, and I think we could adjust the condition language, say, "commercial driveway." I mean, we might have not have, you know, used the, you know, maybe there's a better way to word this, but I think the gist of it is, is that if this is going to be developed commercially and you have the houses to the north, we need to have adequate buffering. The commercial traffic needs to flow through the site the applicant has to the south. There needs to be, you know, either this all needs to be combined into one parcel or tie, you know, lot tie agreements or cross access easements. Actually, for building code, if they're going to build in that area, that would all need to be combined. So there's, you know, if you guys have suggestions on what would be a better way to say it, but I think the fact that we don't want commercial traffic going to East Douglas holds true.
Just to follow up to that, Jason. So there is no need to put a condition regarding combining the properties following the rezoning, or would that be something under our jurisdiction?
I mean, we would, yeah, I mean, we would typically, in the site plan phase, I mean, I think what I would like to do is hear the applicant describe the project a little greater, and then we might react a little bit at the table here and maybe tweet some of the conditions. But in general, the notion of, we know what they're doing, this is a relatively small area. When I say we know what they're doing, the overall concept is fairly, it's multifamily development. The zoning district they're proposing, which already exists in the primary law, it is RX, was it RX2, is a transitional zoning that was intended to transition from, like, commercial areas to lower-density areas. So that zoning district makes sense from that perspective. But there might be some nuances that we can adjust after we hear the presentation from the applicant.
All right. Thanks, Sririshi. And applicant is present. Please come up, state your name, address. You have 10 minutes. Sign in when you're done.
I don't have 10 minutes worth of talking. Bob Gibson, Civil Design Advantage, 4121 Northwest Urbendale Drive. Yeah, in Urbendale. Let's see. First of all, those lots, how does something like that happen? You've got four lots that are just kind of landlocked. That sliver of land out to Douglas is only 10 or 11 feet wide, so it's worthless as an access. And for what's being anticipated here, it wouldn't be used. We may use it to get a connection to the storm sewer out there in Douglas, because that's kind of the way the ground flows. But as far as what's being planned and why there was not a concept done yet, the owner's still evaluating the costs. Likely, more than likely, that that building's going to stay, just for cost purposes and just be remodeled inside. And may get added to, and if we add to it, there's going to have to be increased parking. So that would have to move up in there. Even as it is now, the parking around that motel unit is really tight and insufficient. So that's what would happen in that property. And we'd do that, and that's going to trigger some detention requirements, so that's where that would happen as well, too. You know, and it would be open space, probably about a quarter or a third of it would be, probably more like a quarter of it, would be open space at the very least in detention. Buffers would be maintained, as was addressed. There are trees back there. A lot of them aren't that great, but it's to the owner's benefit to preserve as many as possible, you know, if we can work them around the parking in the building. And I don't know, is there anything else? I think I, there was something else somebody brought up that I don't think I've answered.
I have a question about the concern that was raised concerning this, it looks like an alley up to East Douglas. I've seen similar situations in the city of Des Moines where there is a situation like this, and what happens is that over time, and it doesn't take very much time, for vehicles that shouldn't be using a drive like that to be using drives like that. And it gets on and on and on. So my question is, what do you propose to do to solve that problem, which is, in my opinion, a very real one for neighbors?
Well, first of all, it's not paved, and there'd be no anticipation of paving it. But if that was concerned, I'm sure, since it's not going to be used, it probably would not be much of a concern for the owner to gate it off or something. So there is absolutely no chance of somebody coming, using that strip for vehicular access.
So considering that it's not paved, would you agree, then, for it not to be used as a commercial use?
Just that strip? You're talking just about that little strip?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, there's nothing we can do with it, other than use it kind of like an easement to bring the storm sewer outlet from detention or whatever to connect to the storm sewer in Douglas.
So that in some way, then, it could be gated off?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I don't see why that couldn't happen, so.
Isn't that strip currently like uneven grass right now? I mean, it's basically like a little hill, isn't it? It's not really a road.
It's got somewhat of a slope to it, yeah. It's just grass.
It's on the right side of that fence, isn't it? It's not even in their yard, is it?
You know, it's kind of hard to know. It might be, because it's so near, it might be on the left side in this picture.
How wide is it?
10, maybe 11 feet. Off the county website, we haven't done this boundary survey up there yet, but on the county website, it scaled off to just under 11, but that's not all that accurate, so. So I mean, even any kind of drive, it would only be one way anyway, and it's just, I mean, you've got the light pole there and that pedestal, it's just, it just wouldn't be done.
All right. Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? In favor? You can come up, state your name, address. You have five minutes. Sign in when you're done.
My name's Alan Cole. I live at 309 Northeast 7th Street, Ankeny, Iowa. I'm the store director at Cash Saver that's right next to this property, and we are all for it. The area that is to be rezoned, N3A, we are hoping that that area is rezoned. Right now, that area is, there's a lot of illegal activity that goes on in those trees. So we're hoping that something's done there. We didn't know what the developer was looking at doing, but if those trees were gone, we would be all for it. I believe that motel used to house people that stayed there. They actually lived in those two hotels, and they actually shopped our store frequently. It'd be nice to see that again, and definitely clean up that little area. It'd be nice to see that. And then eventually, something will take over where Villagen is, and it might be thriving again, who knows? Be nice. So we're all for it.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Neutral or opposition? You do have five minutes for rebuttal. I'm not sure you need it. Any other questions for staff?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to answer the question about the setback and the buffer. So for the zoning, this proposed zoning district, there'll be a 25-foot setback and 10-foot buffer, landscape buffer requirement.
Thank you. Thanks. All right. If there are any other questions, I'm going to close the public hearing.
I would move staff pending anyone's problem.
I'm in support of that. All right, there's a motion on the floor to move staff.
Madam Chair, may I ask for a friendly amendment and to strike the word "access" so that the motion includes "shall be no driveway" to the property from East Douglas Avenue?
Sorry, apologies. I'm just trying to read to make sure I understand. So you're saying to make it so that it says there shall be no access at all from East Douglas, is what the effect is?
He doesn't want people driving on it, is what?
So just strike "access" and leave "driveway"?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I fully agree. I'm in.
Okay. And the applicant also was in favor of that, so, just so everyone knows. All in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. All right. And Todd, how do you vote?
In favor.
Thank you.
Motion carries 13-0.
All right. Number eight, our last item of the night, request from First Assembly of God Church, represented by Jeffrey Ostrader, for review and approval of public hearing site plan reached church building and site improvements, and for type 2 design alternatives to waive the requirement to screen rooftop for multiple parcels located in the vicinity of 2725 Merle Hay Road. And Nick will be presenting this item.
Cool. Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. Just a quick background on this one. You might have read the staff report. Really, the impetus for them even doing a site plan, as you guys might be familiar, City of Des Moines are cumulative permit value requirement, so they're doing a pretty intensive interior renovation. And because it's pretty intensive compared to their building value, they're triggering site improvements. So as part of this plan, really, the three main things, they're doing a major interior overhaul, which the applicant, they can explain that in a little bit more detail, they're altering one of the entrances on the east side of the building, and they're doing some landscaping to comply with the current ordinance. So those are really the three main things. The thing at issue tonight is the rooftop mechanical equipment, so I'll really try to keep the discussion glued on that. That's really the only thing that you guys, as the commission, are going to have input on tonight. So here's an aerial of the site. It's outlined here. It's a pretty large property. If you've either driven or walked in this area on Merle Hay, it's just south of Urbendale and a little bit north of Hickman. So it's a pretty large, pretty prominent building on the corridor, pretty large parking lot. They are one of, probably one of the larger churches in the city, I would say. So it is pretty prominent in that way, and also in a pretty residential area, kind of in a transitional area of Merle Hay. As you guys probably know, it's a relatively commercial corridor. As you get farther north, it's very heavily commercial, a commercial note to the south. This area is relatively residential compared to some of the other areas of the road, which is kind of important to point out. So digging into the site plan, I'm not going to spend too much time on it. Just really, just wanted to show kind of the existing conditions, what the applicant is proposing to do. We've worked with them to provide a relatively robust landscaping plan, so that's good. They've been good to work with in that way. Some of the elevations, some of what they're proposing to do, they're proposing to swap out some of the building materials, just kind of give the facade a refresh generally, and like I said, enhance the east side facade, that main entrance, to kind of create more of a plaza-type entry. This is a vision board that was provided by the architect. It does show kind of how they would like to try to blend some of the units in with the existing building, as opposed to screening them. So that's something that staff has definitely acknowledged in that way. So if you can, they try to blend some of the units in terms of the color palette of what is proposed here. Here's some images of the site. So you can see, we got the existing mechanical units up here, and this is from the east side of the property. So kind of, if you remember looking at the aerial, kind of in the more residential portion of where this property sits. Here's a view from the corner of Merle Hay and New York Avenue on the west side, so on the main corridor. It's a little bit further setback, but you can still tell the units are relatively visible, pretty visible. Another view of those units. Here's one on the front side, on the southwest corner of the property. And then here's also a view of the backside of the property. So you can tell there's kind of like an alley-type condition or a driveway between the existing building and the residential units that abut it. So generally, just kind of thinking of the staff recommendation here, there's really two main reasons why, as staff, we thought that they should screen the units. One, really, the interior scope that I was talking about earlier, it said there was a pretty heavy interior renovation. The budget that we have received as staff has been about $9.6 million. The applicant has given us a quote of about $120,000 to screen the rooftop units. It's about 1.2% of the project cost. So staff, and considering the major scope that's occurring here, we really, there's probably not going to be a scope in the future that's going to be greater than the one that's in front of us right now, unless they do a completely new building or do some major building additions. And so with that, staff thought that they should bring the screening of these existing units up to code. We do acknowledge that they've existed for a long time, they've been in that condition, but we also acknowledge that this is a pretty intense renovation that they're doing. We think that they should bring it up into compliance with our current codes. Couple reasons for that. One is aesthetic. Generally, I think most of us can agree, even with some of the painting that they're proposing to do, and some of really the, they're trying to align it with some of their new facade palette, generally, they do stick out. There's a pretty relatively dense residential neighborhood behind it. It's on a major commercial corridor. This is a pretty prominent building on the corridor. And so as staff, we feel a little bit more could have been done to screen these units architecturally from surrounding properties from the right away. And then in addition, these are pretty big, commercial-grade mechanical units. As people living in urban areas can probably attest, they do emit noise. They're relatively loud. It's not like staff has done a comprehensive noise study in the city of Des Moines, but we did look at some other jurisdictions that sometimes do do noise analyses as part of CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act. And really, a lot of times, what they have found is these commercial-style, these larger HVAC units, generators, coolers, condensers, similar mechanical equipment, can generate noise levels that are perceptible within about 70 to 100 feet away. And a lot of these residential properties that we're looking at here, that are to the east, sit within that range. And so it is audible. And so that is also a consideration that staff takes into account, and we think about rooftop mechanical screening. Yes, we have some of the aesthetic reasons, but also, we want to acknowledge that we are abutting a relatively heavy residential area, and so we want to try to screen some of that noise and catch it there and keep it in the site. Before the meeting, I did receive a lot of phone calls. As you can probably tell, there's a lot of properties nearby, so there was a pretty large noticing area. So people were really curious just about what was going on at the property. We didn't receive any official comment cards. I did get this email communication. Really, I'll let you read it, but there was really a back and forth, just asking, "Hey, what's going on here?" And then the person did say that they have had issues with noise from events, but then also, they do hear some of the units occasionally.
Can you zoom in a little bit?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
And this is just a rehashing of the notice map that we were talking about earlier. So, yeah, a lot of properties were notified in this, but like I said before, no formal comment cards were received. Happy to take any questions.
How come, how come they had to submit a site plan?
Yeah. So they had to submit a site plan because their building value, so their building value, I don't know their exact building value, but their cumulative permit value was over 50% of their assessed building value. And so with that, that triggers the need for site improvements to bring the site up in conformance with Chapter 135. So kind of like what I mentioned, it was like landscaping was really like the main key of that.
And this is the only item that was not in conformance?
Correct. Yeah. We've worked with them to get everything else in line with the landscaping.
Yeah, this is what they're asking for waiver of.
Nick, what was the percentage of the total project cost?
It was 1.2% approximately. It was 1.2% approximately. That could have fluctuated using the approximate budgets that the applicant gave us.
Yeah, I have a question. Can you talk a little bit more about what the city is requesting they do, like what type of material and where it will be located?
Sure.
Where you would want it located?
So generally, the code in Article 4, the design requirements, calls for architectural quality metal screening. So it's not overly prescriptive in that way, but it would be a metal screening that would be basically permanently affixed to the top of the roof, and it would be able to screen it from adjoining rights-of-way. And it cannot be attached to the equipment. That's a big thing, too. So it would be basically like a separate appendage that you would attach to the top of the roof, and to be code compliant, it would screen it from all directions. So you wouldn't be able to see it from the right away, but also from adjoining properties.
And like parapet walls and those sort of things will also qualify for that. So I mean, often, the metal screen is what we end up with, but...
An architectural solution is always preferred, of course.
You know, like part of the building.
Okay, so it doesn't necessarily need to be like a parapet wall around the edge of all of the edges of the building. It just needs to screen the equipment.
Correct. Especially, and Jason, feel free to butt in, I would argue with this, this is really mostly an interior renovation. So I don't, as staff, I don't think a recommendation would be to make a larger parapet wall. I think we would probably acknowledge that the architectural metal screening that they could add would be appropriate for this.
Yeah, and we would also be willing to, like I said, you know, look at existing building elements that might provide screening. It's not necessary that they screen each unit on four sides. It might be that there's lines of screening, and so they're all kind of clustered, you know. There's a variety of ways to do it.
Is this property receiving any other supports? I mean, obviously, I mean, we invest $9.7 million in non-paying property tax every year already for a $9.6 million project. So in addition to the $9.7 million of tax exemption, is there anything else that the city is giving them for this project?
Not that I'm aware of. Maybe the applicant can answer that.
Okay.
No.
All right, thank you, Nick. And applicant is present. Please state your name, address. You have 10 minutes, and sign in when you're done.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jeff Ostrader. And you want my home address or the church address? I'm sorry. Which do you prefer? 2725 Merle Hay Road.
Are you like an officer of the church, or?
Yeah, my position is executive pastor.
Then you can use the address of the property.
Great. Just a little brief history of the church, in case you're not familiar. Our church has been in the Des Moines area since the late '30s, and in our current location since the '60s in our current building. And it's getting a little long in the tooth, and so we've been planning these updates for quite a while. We love Des Moines and want to be in Des Moines. In fact, previous church leadership had acquired some land in Urbandale, 60 acres, and planned to move there. And our heart and our current leadership team wants to be in the City of Des Moines with a purpose on purpose. So we sold that land to facilitate this, being able to even do this in Des Moines. So we love Des Moines. We love our city. We want to serve our city with no strings attached. Just a couple of quick examples. We do this all week, every week. It's not about Sunday for us. It's about Monday through Saturday as well. Just this back-to-school time, we just hosted the Des Moines Public Schools early childhood teachers, over 200 teachers in our facility, and we just let them with no strings attached. Those are the kind of things we're doing in the city for our city. We have Ridge Day coming up. Last year, we had over 1,000 people. We serve warm food. We do food distribution and jumpy-bouncy things for the kids. We have a weekly pantry, a free medical clinic. You can check on all these things that we do for the City of Des Moines because we love our city. If I understand the reasons for a negative visual impact, our idea is to paint those units to blend in, and with the idea that that might actually, the screening may actually draw your eye to those things. And we're just hoping to be able to paint those things, and they would disappear from your eye. My kind of unscientific experiment with regard to the negative auditory impact is the traffic. If you've spent time on Merle Hay Road, the traffic level of just cars traveling up and down Merle Hay Road is at an audible level that I'm not able to, with just my human ear, distinguish any audible noise outside. I've never heard a rooftop unit kick on from the outside of the building. And I've been going to the church since I was six years old. I'm 54 now, so 48 years. I've been on the staff for 15 years, and I've never received a complaint about either one of those issues, the rooftop units or noise from the rooftop units. We would just like to spend money on the improvements. Spending money this way would actually detract from some of the things that we want to do, the things that are our heart to do to serve our city. And, you know, as I said, we want to be in Des Moines, so...
Any questions? All right, thank you.
I have one question. I'm sorry. Were you caught off guard by the requirement to screen the rooftop equipment?
Well, I don't, I don't know a lot about these things, so probably the answer is easy, yes. I guess what kind of concerns me about the idea of it is my understanding, and I could be wrong, but my understanding is we need to penetrate rubber membrane roofs and go to steel to do this kind of thing. Also, I know about flat roofs, as they leak. And anytime we're doing that kind of thing over and over, now we're creating an environment that could cause things to leak, and we're doing some really nice things inside to do more ministry and serve our city even more. So did I answer your question? The answer is yes.
Is there any other scope in your project for repair or replacement of your roof?
Yeah, there are a couple roofs that are at that age, that have aged out, that do need some repair, yes. I do want to say that the city staff has been amazing to work with. So thank you very much.
Slight follow-up on Andy's. So I guess, so there's going to be a few roofs that you're going to replace anyway. So going down to that level isn't actually the issue we're talking about. And then we're looking at the $120,000. Is that accounting for the cost of making sure that it will be waterproof and actually appropriate? Or like, is $120, you're saying, is actually a low estimate? Or are you just saying what there? Like, after you spent $120,000, you're saying it's still going to be able to be leaky and sort of a half-done job?
So if I, just wanted to make sure I absorbed all that you said. So...
If you spend $120,000, do you really think that it won't be enough to ensure that your roof is not appropriate for preventing leaks?
I'm concerned about that. Two of the roofs, it's 100, approximately, it's a little under 100,000 square foot building on 11 acres. Two of the complete roofs will be replaced. The rest are not. So when those areas are penetrated, I guess I don't know. I'm not a construction expert. So that's my naive concern.
I, sorry, I might be wrong on this. I have a memory of reading it. Are you having additional units installed as part of this, additional HVAC units being installed on the roof?
Yeah, we are, yes, ma'am. We are expanding an area that's enclosed now to make a bigger lobby space, and so that would require some additional units. Our architect is here, I believe, there's two or four. Thank you. We have 12. We're adding four.
Is the percentage that was provided, is that accurate? Would the $120,000 be like close to 1% of the total scope for the project?
If 120 is correct, the overall project cost, that's, that would be the right math. Again, my concern is more, where would I rather spend $120,000? And we'd rather do some improvements to the inside to be able to serve people better.
All right, thank you. Are there any members of the audience who wish to speak in favor of this item? You can come up, state your name, address, five minutes, and sign in when you're done.
Sure, thank you. My name's Skylar Phelps. I'm with Mantel Teeter Architects out of Kansas City, Missouri. Our address is 5013 North Washington Street in Gladstone, Missouri. So I'm your friendly southern neighbor. Jeff would probably be disappointed if I stood up here and spoke in opposition of his application, so I think I'll speak in favor of it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as well. I concur with the comments that Jeff had made. The staff has been a pleasure to work with on this project. Just wanted to speak a little bit on a couple of different issues that you were probing, Jeff, about, one of which would be the roof penetrations. We are going to re-roof a couple of the low-slope roofs, which we will detail correctly and do the best we can to make those watertight. But anytime you make a penetration in the roof in the future, it's an opportunity for a leak. The existing roofs are, of course, of greater concern, but again, we'll detail those appropriately. But we have to tie those into the existing roof and into any stanchions that come up from attachment to the roof structure below, and then watertight those collars as well. So the day we walk off the job, it won't be leaking, but we can't say what will happen after we walk off the project. We did have a lot of conversation with staff. I know a lot of time is spent at the staff level and at the planning commission level devising ordinance requirements that are intended to beautify neighborhoods. And as an architect, I completely appreciate that. Having said that, I know not every ordinance is written to meet the requirements of every individual circumstance. And I think we do have some special circumstances in this project that are worth considering, some of which I think were illustrated in the photographs that were shared. Some of the views, you can see more of the mechanical units. Some of the views, you can see little slivers of the mechanical units. And that is because from eye level at the adjacent thoroughfares, with the height of the building and the parapets that are provided, you can see different, different levels and amounts of those mechanical units. And we submit, certainly for Merle Hay Road, most of those mechanical units are screened from view naturally by distance, height of the building and the parapets that are there. And that's why in conversation with staff about trying to find a middle ground, we suggest that we might be able to paint those units to match the surrounding wall color of the building architecture and help them blend in. Our concern as architects is if we provide the required enclosures around the units, they'll need to be a little bit taller than the units. They'll need to be a little bit wider than the units, making them a larger architectural feature on the elevation, which we don't prefer to do. And then the secondary concern, of course, was the penetrations in the roof, the maintenance associated with that, along with the cost. And $120,000 in the scope of $9 million doesn't sound like a lot, but it's still dollars that the church could otherwise spend in trying to accomplish some of their ministry goals. I was glad that staff brought up the landscape plan. We, at the onset of the project, did not anticipate that any exterior improvements, besides the cosmetic improvements that the church was proposing to improve the aesthetics of the building. They weren't initially anticipating any exterior improvements. We met with staff very early on to introduce them to the project and understand what requirements we would need to be mindful of, and that was brought to our attention. The total cost of which is more in the neighborhood of $500,000. So with respect to the church's budget, no, they didn't anticipate doing curved islands inside the existing parking lot area, landscaping buffer around the entire perimeter. But I think they're happy to do that because that beautifies the campus overall, and they want the facility to be attractional. So those improvements are being made, and I believe as those trees mature would serve to provide some additional obstruction to the mechanical units that are in question. So I stand ready for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Is there, as the designer, have you considered a middle ground whereby some of the units are screened and some are not?
We did have that discussion. I think that discussion could be had again with staff to address maybe some of the major mechanical units, ones that are of major concern. We could explore some different ways of post-applying some screening to the existing mechanical units, but most older units won't accept a mechanical unit-applied screen wall. But that's something we would certainly be willing to look at again with staff if that's something that needed to be considered.
A quick question regarding the notice for this requirement. Did the design team go through the typical process of the pre-application meeting with the city where all of these sort of things may come up for requirements?
That was a question to me. We did have a preliminary application conference where we had some of these conversations, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item? Name, address, five minutes. Sign in when you're done.
David Vance, Bishop Engineering, 3501 104th Street, Urbandale, Iowa. I'm not the architect, don't have much to do with the building, but as Skylar pointed out, there was a lot of added costs that they really weren't accounting for. As a church member myself, that tends to church in Des Moines, we tried to remodel our kitchen, and then we had to put in a grease interceptor, which pretty much doubled the cost of our kitchen. They have to add two grease interceptors. They have to take a water line across Merle Hay Road to increase the fire capacity. As you can imagine, there's a lot of utilities in Merle Hay Road. That cost is quite extensive. I don't have all those costs in front of me, but there was a lot of added cost to answer that question, just to kind of expand upon that a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition?
Hello, Carol Maher, Ward 3. Thank you very much for putting three bike racks on the site where none exists, but I think this may be the definition of overparked. There are a heck of a lot of parking spaces there, and I would be interested to know if there were any type, type-one exceptions approved on the islands, because it looks deficient to me compared to how much concrete there is. There's also a parking lot across New York Avenue that I believe is probably part of this campus, right, that is not addressed here, which is in a very, parking lot that's in very bad disrepair, that doesn't look like it's due to get any islands. And also, there's something called the Inflation Reduction Act, which has provided a lot of money for solar panels. And solar panels might be a great option on a flat roof, especially with all the clearance you have facing south that might hide a few mechanicals. You might want to consider that. There's lots of great incentives that make it almost free to put solar panels up. And it would be really great, I was a little confused on the landscaping plan because it said there were trees where, today when I went by, there were no trees. So I hope that they consider putting trees in the 15-foot rear setback that runs along where the houses are facing into the building. I was confused on that front as well. But thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Are there any other questions? You do have five minutes for rebuttal, if you need it. Not sure if you do. Are you good? All right, any other questions for, I close the public hearing? All right, staff, or commissioners, what are your thoughts?
I would move staff. We invest $9.7 million in the missionary work of this already per year. That seems like a lot already. And to forego $1.2 million, I think through value engineering, we're going to either find that already. It seems, we have an ordinance, we've known about it, we've talked about it for this whole project. It doesn't seem like a significant extra exposure compared to the investment being made by the city already. So I would move staff unless there's friendly amendments or major opposition.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to move staff. All in favor, please raise your right hand. All opposed, please raise your right hand. And Todd, how do you vote?
In favor.
In favor?
Motion carries 11 to 2.
Thank you. Thank you, and Jason, do you have any reports?
I do not, thank you.
All right, thanks everyone, have a good night.